We'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, July the first, two thousand and twenty-five, and welcome all the people who have joined us here this evening, and our staff, also our directors who have joined us. We excuse our council member Anderson, she's on other duty this evening, so we'll excuse her. So we'll start this evening out with a pledge of allegiance by council member Ramon, after which we'll have opening remarks by council member Jensen.
The audience, please rise and join me in reading the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear and kind heavenly fathers, we, heavenly bower has before thee as a community, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together as a city, and as the city council mayor, and to discuss the needs of our wonderful city. We ask tonight, as we have our public hearings, that we be able to discuss these needs in a civil way, that we be able to hear from both sides and be able to discuss the issues in a civil way. Again, we're grateful for all we have, and grateful for our community. We say these things in the vice on, just to make sure.
Thanks Sid and Eric. Now move to our item number four, approval of tonight's meeting agenda. I don't think we have any changes.
Yeah, no changes, Mayor.
So I ask for a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Williams, a second by council member Ramon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now...
Mayor, we need a pro tem. I don't know if that's where you were headed.
Yeah, that's where I'm headed to. I'll call for a here. We've, I have to leave this meeting early, and council member Anderson, who was the pro tem, is not with us this evening, as I first stated, and so I take motions to appoint a pro tem this evening.
Mayor, I'll just make a motion, since Eric's sitting right there on your right. That's...
Okay, I have a motion to appoint Eric, councilman Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Ramon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Eric, looks like you've got the duty to this evening, so. Anyway, we'll now move on to our open session, and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time, with anything that they'd like to talk to the council about. I just remind you that we do have a couple of public hearings this evening. Please wait till those public hearings before we, if, at that time, and so we'll open up our open session right now to come forward. It's...Steve, does it involve the... Okay.
Well, sort of, but not. All right. Steve Felon's my name. I would just like to ask for, I don't know, a motion, whatever you ask for, that after the city presents their part of this next part that's going to come up, when they're done and we come back up, if they come back up, I believe that we should have a fair chance for rebuttal against what they say. Because you guys closed the public meeting as soon as we do our thing in the last meeting. The city member got up and presented some more information, but we didn't get a chance to rebuttal it, and that's all I'm asking for, is that we get the same opportunity to make a rebuttal if they're going to make a rebuttal.
Sorry, Steve, after we close the public hearing, it is closed, and there's no rebuttal.
Okay, so that means the city guy can't come back in and give other, more information after it's closed?
No, we request it from our city, we can. Okay, well now move on to, no, is anybody come forward, anybody else, for our open session? Welcome.
I'm Ashley Hart, and I live just up the road in a historic home, and this is Amy Wadley, who's also my neighbor. We, as well as other members of the community, have come here tonight to address the issue of saving historic homes. It has come to our attention that yet another home will be demolished if funds are not raised to move it and save it. While it may be too late to save this home, it is our hope that we might be able to save the remaining homes in our community. We completely support a private owner to do what they wish with their, with their property once bought, but we believe that protections and provisions can be put in place before these homes are sold. Historic homes bring culture, charm, history, and overall higher property values to their surrounding areas. If we keep encouraging big developers to come in and make high profits, building high-rise, high-density, that detracts from our small, main town street and surrounding areas, we will lose all of that charm that the citizens love and admire about the city. In a conversation with councilwoman Ramon, I shared several ways in which the city can help in protecting these homes. She's assured me that she would get those to the council and to the community development. Some of these options include, but are not limited to, zoning, demolish delays, preservation easements, and strengthening historic site designations, many of which have been implemented and proven to work in other Utah cities. In addition to those, through the Historic Commission, we as a city have been accepted into the Utah Main Street program, and I would encourage the council to look into that and also see what that entails, and to also fully support that. In the words of councilman Ramon from our conversation, quote, "If we can do more, we should," end quote. And we can't just keep taking pictures of these and putting them on Facebook to memorialize them, we actually have to do something. And we believe as, as community members and as Historic Commission members, that there is more that can be done.
Yeah, and we, we want to support the city, and so I think our ask is, what can we do to show the city council that members of our community care, and that they would be supportive of those kinds of policies or procedures that would help bring attention to those homes before they're demolished, and other historic buildings in our town that we love so much?
Okay.
That's what we would like to know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
My name is Abigail Bonilla. My husband and I are the applicants for public hearing item number A for section nine, and we're requesting that all city council members, Daniel Cardenas, Neil Winterkin, and anybody else, all speak before my husband and I speak regarding our application on the issue. Thank you.
Anyone else? I see no one else coming forward. We'll now close our open session, and bring it back up to the council, and move on to item number six, our consent items, which include A, consider for approval change order number three for SNL for the swimming pool deck project; B, to consider for approval payment number seven for SNL for the swimming pool deck project; and C, to consider for approval payment number seven for FX construction for the American Fork River diversion reconstruction project; and also D, payment approval reports for June the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Ask for a motion. Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's consent items, as read by you. We have a motion by council member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any appro, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We don't, we do not have board commissioner committee appointments or presentations this evening, so we'll move right into item number nine, our public hearing this evening, and we'll move to public hearing nine A, a public hearing to consider the request of the ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one zero for a vicinity plan amendment located within, delineated by the Locust Avenue, nine hundred south, eleven fifty east, and one thousand south in the R one dash nine single-family residential zone. Applicant is requesting to move or remove a connecting road between nine hundred south and ten thousand south, and the applicant is Ricardo Barnelli. We'll turn the time over to director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, thank you so much. What we have right here is an application to amend our vicinity plan, okay? Our vicinity plan is some guidelines that we have adopted as part of our general plan, for what the roads should be located for future development, or for proposed development within our city, okay? A year and a half ago, December of two thousand and twenty-three, our planning commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval to the city council, who later on adopted, on February two thousand and twenty-four, unanimously, a change on our original vicinity plan, okay? So I have an image right there, and what we can see right there is the original vicinity plan. Sorry, it might be a little hard to see, but in the original vicinity plan for the area that we're going to talk, and let me, geographically, let me tell you the geographical constraints for this area, is between Locust Avenue and eleven fifty east, between nine hundred south and one thousand south. So that's the, the area that we're going to be discussing, or the area where the vicinity plan is giving us a guideline on how to, how to develop. So that's the, the original vicinity plan that we had adopted, and if we take a look at it, it's, it's very impractical. It's completely, I'm going to say, close to impossible to develop any properties in there, because the, these vicinity plans did not take into consideration any property lines. As you can see, the property lines run through every single home already existing. Not just that, but also the vicinity plan included multiple cul-de-sacs, and also the cul-de-sacs go right where the, where some of the homes are right there. We can take a look at the image right here. There's a home right here, right in the middle of a cul-de-sac, another home that will be cut. Anyway, it was a, a very complicated vicinity plan that we had in, in the books, adopted in the books. Not just that, but also there's some geographical constraints in the, in the area, for example, the slope, and as a city, we need to be able to provide services and connectivity, not just pedestrian connectivity, vehicle connectivity, but connectivity for the services and lines that we already have in place. We also work very close with our neighbors from the city of Linden, and in deciding what will be the best approach on how we can amend that vicinity plan, okay? So again, a year and a half ago, approximately, we adopted this vicinity plan that we have right there, okay? So if we go back to the previous one, the previous vicinity plan had one, two, three, four cul-de-sacs, and it had one, two, three, four connections, north to south, between nine hundred south and, and one thousand south. So that was, some of those were eliminated, and we end up with proposing that vicinity plan that is right here. Now, this vicinity plan, again, was adopted in February of two thousand and twenty-four, so it's been in the books, it's been adopted, that's what we have right now. As a legislative decision, we adopted that plan. If someone comes to us and says, hey, I would like to, and by us, I mean community development, and they propose a subdivision, or they propose any development, we default to this plan right here that we already have adopted, and we tell them, hey, this is what we have, we're looking for those connections, show us how your plan meets those requirements. So in that time, after, after February twenty-four, we received an application that took into consideration the vicinity plan, and we received, processed, and approved a plat, a three-lot plat in this area right here, okay? That plat, again, followed the, the vicinity plan that we have adopted right now, and this road that goes north to south, south to north, was two-thirds of that road were designed and provided on the person who is doing, who's doing the, the subdivision, on the neighbor who's doing the subdivision. So two-thirds of the road approximately are contained within their property, okay? So those, those applicants, they're, they're vested, because their application came at a time when we had already adopted that, and their application follows that vicinity plan, okay? What we have today is an application from, from Ricardo Bonilla to eliminate this, this road right here, and having a vicinity plan that looks like this. If we take a look at this, the differences, is the only difference, because there's not many, many differences, the only difference, everything else is the same, but it would be the elimination of this road right here, okay? A road that has already been, has approved, and that provides access to a approved subdivision right there. We brought this item to the planning commission, as, as you, as we know, a legislative decision always goes to the planning commission first. They took a look at this, at this proposal to the elimination of that road, and the planning commission forwarded unanimous recommendation of denial. The reason why is because they thought they, in, in their motion, they say that the current vicinity plan, meaning the existing one, the one right here, promotes the best use of the land for design, and overall access for future utilities, in a way that is more advantageous than the, than the proposed amendment, okay? The recommendation from staff was also a recommendation of denial, and recommendation of keeping the existing vicinity plan, because we already have a development that followed that vicinity plan that has been approved, and that they did two-thirds of a street on their property, fully contained on their property, that the current vicinity plan provides for a best option for coordinating necessary utility services between our residents and the residents of, of our neighbors from the city of Linden. Also that the current vicinity plan is the best option to tackle the unique topographical features of the area for future development, because we're going to get multiple applications in the future for development. So that's what I, again, let me, in a nutshell, we have, we used to have this vicinity plan, we adopted this one, this is what's in the book, and what the applicant is proposing is the elimination of this road, and leave it with only two connections on that area. That's what I have, Mayor and council. I also have the public works director that worked with us on this, on this item. Actually, the, when the item was proposed in February twenty-four, he's the one that presented when it was adopted originally, okay? So that's what I have, Mayor and council, I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Counsel, questions?
I have a question.
Councilman Jensen.
Director, I, I mean, we have our current vicinity plan that you've talked about, it's in place. We have the one that's submitted. My question is, the Kelsons, I don't know if they're here or not, they have a plot plan or approved subdivision, is that correct?
Correct.
And so the, what I can gather is that they're moving forward with this approved plan.
Correct.
I guess I'm a little perplexed, because whether, I, you have a, a proposed vicinity plan that goes against something that's already been approved, and are they grandfathered in? What, what happens?
It's my, it's my understanding that since the, the neighbors, which in this case are the Kelsons, they apply, while this was legally adopted, the current one was legally adopted, I think they have vested rights on their development, meaning that, that whether, if there's any change or something like that, they were still going to go ahead and build their part of the road, which again is two-thirds of the, about approximately two-thirds of the, of the road. There is a, a hammerhead right here for turnaround, and yeah, it will be, it will stay there in perpetuity. If, it will be staying there in perpetuity if the, this, the other portion of the road is not developed. I think it's important to mention, council Jensen, that at this point, and as then Kelsons are developing their property, they, I mean, staff, and staff representing the city, is not requiring the Bonillas to develop their part of the property at all right now. So it's not a requirement, it's not a requirement to, to develop it, even as I have an application for an accessory structure in the back, for a, in the backyard, for a shop, and that code only requires for the applicant, when there's, when there's a shop or, or a structure in the back that is built, that is bigger than X amount, they need to build improvements on existing roads. So improvements will be required on, right here on, on nine hundred, as it will be for anybody else who's building a, a shop or an addition to the house. However, that will not trigger the construction of the road. The only thing that will trigger the construction of the road on the future, on the Bonilla side, will be further development or subdivision of the land.
And then I guess my follow-up question then would be for Tina. But let's just say, we approved this new vicinity plan tonight. What would that do to us as a city with the Kelsons? I mean, they're already moving forward, I, I'm perplexed here.
So what would happen is, the Kelsons would have the right to move forward with their current development plans, they are vested. You get to be vested if you have submitted a completed development plan and paid the fees under the current zoning and, and land use ordinances, which they would, would be. If the council decided to remove that road from the vicinity plan, the Kelsons would still be able to build their development, and build the two-thirds of the road, and the hammerhead at the bottom on one thousand south. And then it would be, you wouldn't be expecting the Bonillas, if in the future they ever did decide to develop, they wouldn't necessarily be required to build the other part of the road. But again, vicinity plans can be amended, and so if somebody came in and wanted to develop the Bonillas property, and they needed frontage on a public road, they would probably end up putting the road in, the, the other half of the road, anyway.
It's just because it just goes against, right? I mean, they're, at least what I'm seeing here in analysis is move, eliminate that road, which is, all right, anyway, thank you.
Daniel, is there any, can we hear from police and fire? Is there any safety issues when removing that road that will now happen? On the police and fire side of things? Chiefs? Okay, with removing the road, so no, no safety issue there?
Well, can I ask that a different way? When they went through planning commission, was, was this something that was looked at, addressed by public safety?
No, no, I mean, right now, as the, and we're not talking about the vicinity, I'm going to refer now to the actual plat, the one that is approved. They, they have a hammerhead turnaround already in there. That hammerhead turnaround was supposed to be, to be gone at the time of the full size of the road, and when eventually one thousand goes in there. So that will disappear as soon as there's progress, progress, or there's advance in development of the vicinity area. But as for right now, there is in the plat, a turnaround hammerhead right here. So yeah, vehicles can come and do this and go back.
Okay, so still providing police and fire access?
Correct, yes.
Anyone else, Steve?
Yeah, Daniel, at the planning commission meeting, what, you know, kind of, I guess maybe could you recap a little bit about what was, what was heard there, the comments that were heard by the planning commission, and, and what led to their ultimate decision?
Yeah, so I pretty much verbatim their, their, their motion. So they observed both of them, and they thought that the one that we already have in place is a better alternative than the second one.
Why?
Because it provides for better connectivity, it provides for better, for, like I read it, it's a better design for the overall access for future utility connection, and for future development, too.
Were, at, at the planning commission, or, or anytime before that hearing, did you or your staff receive any complaints or comments that were, you know, kind of, kind of opposing, or in favor of this change? And what did the planning commission discuss there? I just, they, they were able to, they made their findings, and we're, we were recommended to deny the ordinance as well. So I'm trying to just get at, what, what kind of conversation happened there? And were they, were they aware of any issues that came up that we might hear about today?
Yeah, I'm assuming, so the, the applicant is here, the applicant had the opportunity to, to speak. I think when they had their, the applicant spoken, and his wife as well, we had public works addressing a lot of those comments. I think some of the comments were regarding the, the existing plat, not the vicinity plan, but the existing plat, as like, safety and, and safety concerns and stuff like that, but in that case, that they were expressed during the planning commission, but we have public works stand up and explain, from their perspective, how in their, again, from their perspective, it was, it was okay to continue with the, with the existing vicinity plan.
I'd like to hear from Neil, our public works director, about his concerns regarding removing the road, if there are any, or what he, what he feels on the issue.
Anytime we have a development proposed to us, we respond and help the developers understand our code and our processes so that they know what the constraints are, and that, that, what challenges might exist. And in this situation, obviously, when they started, the vicinity plan was in place that had downward sloping cul-de-sacs, which brings water into the property down below. Our current deep lot ordinance required extreme retaining walls, and also doesn't allow for downward sloping driveways. So in exploring the possibility of helping the Kelsons get from A to Z with their development, and with what was within their right, we, we looked at the existing vicinity plan, and recommended a different vicinity plan, which is what we saw. That provided a lot of advantages from a drainage perspective. In the process, we were able to obtain an easement and right-of-way to connect the storm drain all the way to here. So water is going to fall from, from the top of nine hundred south down. It also creates an opportunity as a shared boundary for a utility corridor in one thousand south for Linden, that also has access there. So the one thousand south roadway is a master planned roadway, and we amended the part of, in between that. When you look at a, a transportation plan, you ask yourself, how can we get cars from, from A to Z, and you also ask yourself, how can we get utilities to work how they should, and you ask yourself how we can get pedestrians throughout the area? When you have Main Street, Linden coming in, this T intersection has some advantages of, of having to have vehicles on this one thousand south turn east or west, versus a four-way intersection that would come up here to there.
Because as I understand, that was, that was a potential proposal.
Yeah, I, I don't know in what, I think the current proposal is just
Eliminate it, yeah.
Eliminate the road, but there was some graphic that I saw that was presented that had a, a through street there.
But I want to make sure, I hear, I hear you're right. So you're, but you, you would rather, on this, on this vicinity, you would rather have a T than a four-way?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. Especially with, with the way one thousand south is planned for the future. Also, the, the property owners here, we would just be shifting the burden of the road from here to here, and, and, and they're not interested in developing right now. This property is interested in development. So the plan that we have in place allows for property to develop and have highest and best use, and doesn't impose a requirement by the Bonillas to build anything, it doesn't require them to do anything. It, it is entirely contained on the, the east property there. So we have utility agreements in place with Linden. Those have all been worked out through the development. And, and again, like I mentioned, we will have a storm drain that connects nine hundred south, come down, and eventually tie in there. So trying to be brief, yet detailed. Are there any other areas to which I could comment?
Thanks, Neil.
Happy to address anything now, or later, or any questions associated with anything that, that I have thoughts on as well, so.
Okay.
Don't be afraid to ask.
Anyone else, council? If not, we will now open our public hearing.
Mayor, can we hear from the applicant?
Oh, yes. We'll let the applicant come up and make her statement.
Hello. Good evening, my name is Ricardo Bonilla. I am the legal property owner of ten forty east, nine hundred south. I'm here tonight to formally object the current, a current vicinity plan as it applies to my property. While we are not developing, the plan imposes an immediate and disproportionate burden on our land. We have done the financial analysis, the cost of constructing our portion of the road far exceeds the potential value of the lot we could create. This is a textbook example of an unfunded mandate placing a city's long-term infrastructure goals on the backs of private property owners who will not benefit. In the variance application submitted under file number seven zero zero two four zero zero three, it is clearly stated that the needs of the property owner cannot create the hardship. The hardship cannot have been created by an action or inaction on the part of a owner, or previous owner, for example, a self-imposed hardship. However, the application submitted by Angela Kelson, she stated, end quote, "It is necessary so we don't have to tear home down, her road goes in," end quote. This statement appears to acknowledge a hardship that is self-imposed, which directly contradicts the criteria outlined for the variance approval. Furthermore, the construction of the proposed road imposes a significant and disproportionate financial hardship and, and burden on us, which the city has neglected to take into consideration. The project will necessitate the removal The project will necessitate the removal of mature and fruit-bearing trees on our property, and would place the road approximately 12 feet from our bedroom, closer than the minimum standard setback required by Pleasant Grove City. Additionally, the topographical challenges associated with the elevation change between our lot and the proposed road will require a substantial amount of field dirt to render the area usable. According to the, I think, the plot plans, I think I showed you guys last time, the asphalt is supposed to be on top of our fence, which is like about six, seven foot drop, just half of the road. Once we complete it, it'll be like a 10, 12-foot drop. The project, and see. Additionally, let's see. Sorry, I lost my, my place. Fielded render usable. Due to our property's lower elevation, the traditional gravity-fed sewage system may not function effectively, further complicating the viability and cost of the development. Unlike the Kelsons, who would benefit from the creation of two lots as a result of this road, we will only be left with a single buildable lot. This result is an inequitable outcome. Once 1,000 South is extended, both properties will benefit evenly with one lot each, making the current road plan unnecessary and unjustifiable, preferential. We have consulted with Leo counsel and the director of Utah State Property Rights Abbotishment, and are prepared to take formal legal steps should the road be approved as proposed. Additionally, I submit, I submitted a building permit application on May 1st to construct a shop, but to date, I have not received any communication or updates from either Jacob Hawkins or Daniel Cardenas. It appears there may be an intentional delay in processing our permit, potentially to compel us to construct our half of the proposed road. You can ask Daniel Cardenas, I think the square footage is 900 square feet. My shop is gonna be significantly bigger than that, which will make us have to build our half of the road. Should this continue, we will move forward with legal action as recommended by our attorney and legal recommendations from the director of Utah State Property Rights Abbotishment. Our request is straightforward, remove the road entirely from the vicinity plan as it pertains to our property. We're not asking to move it. We don't want to subject our other neighbors to the same unfair burden. But relocation becomes the city's choice, then the full width of the road should be placed entirely on the Kelsons' property, as they are the ones developing and wanting the road. The road should have appropriate safety measures to protect us from the vehicles and any other hazards from the road. In conclusion, this will never be more than half a road. It provides no benefit to our property, imposes unreasonable financial burden, and raises safety concerns the city has yet to address. I respectfully urge you to consider the plan and apply the same fairness to our family that you afford others. Thank you.
I would also like to express a statement as well as a property owner. For the record, my name is Abigail Bonilla. I am the homeowner of 1040 East 900 South, and I'm here to express my deep concern for the safety of my family, the integrity of, of our property, and the fairness of this process. I have raised serious safety concerns with the city on multiple occasions, specifically regarding elevation differences, drainage, flood risk, and the need for a safety wall. These concerns were acknowledged in a previous meeting by both city council and city staff, as well as the planning commission meeting that we had on this situation as well. And they have failed to address our concerns. On June 24th, 2025, Aaron Wilson stated in an email, "An asphalt," I quote, "an asphalt berm will discourage traffic from crossing on, on our property," as in the Bonillas' property, close quote. An asphalt berm is just a curb. This does not prevent or stop people from falling off this half-road that is, that the city is requiring the Kelsons to build. And like Aaron Wilson has stated, it does, it only discourages traffic. It doesn't take into consideration any safety wall, or any, anything stopping someone from falling off that road onto our property. This full road is currently on the vicinity plan, is just 12 feet from our bedroom. If a car loses control in bad weather, or is pushed off the road due to its narrow width, and crashes into our yard or our home, this could result in injury or even death. And I'd like to just express that legal action will follow if this happens in our case, because safety measures aren't taken into consideration for just this half-road. Let's see here, on January 16th, 2024, Neil Winterton sent an email to the mayor and several other city council members regarding 1,000 South, stating the following, I quote, "PG and Linden have applied for MAG funding twice for the roadway connection for 1,000 South. Ironically, the roadway according to MAG does not qualify for regional significance, meaning it won't be busy enough. 1,000 South does not meet the threshold for regional traffic funding, meaning the demand doesn't justify three separate connections." The vicinity plan amendment, close quote, "The vicinity plan amendment meeting that occurred back in February 2024, city council member Anderson acknowledged and agreed that there are too many connecting roads, and several other council members agreed with her statement. Our request only removes one segment. Multiple other roads between 900 South and 1,000 South remain. Staff has not demonstrated how this one change will materially impact traffic flow. What precedent are, are you setting by allowing this two-way half-road right now? Will Pleasant Grove City residents be expected to build and fund half-roads in perpetuity, including 1,000 South to 900 South? Our property is not being developed, and there are other methods to guide future lot layouts without imposing infrastructure burdens on private, non-developing homeowners. What I oppose is the economic safety and financial hardship the city is placing on my family, and the misleading and incomplete information presented to decision-makers by city employees, information that favors internal agendas. In both February 2024 and again in June 2024, residents clearly expressed opposition to the proposed vicinity plan. Despite our repeated concerns, our voices have been ignored. Even the developer Roger Dudley has told us and the city that this road is a bad idea, and does not understand why the city is so adamant about putting a road between my house and my neighbor to the east. The Kelsons have never been in favor of, of the construction of this road, as they wanted a flag lot, which they have expressed on several occasions in public hearings, and yet the city continues to force this financial burden on them and on us. Pleasant Grove City residents have made their position clear, and yet it seems our input holds no weight. Neil Winterton, the public city works director, stated in the meeting with the planning commission that PG City has no plan to, to pay for our half of the road, and the city will not compensate us for it either. Our request is to update the vicinity plan to remove the unnecessary and safe road on our side. Under current conditions, this road poses a clear threat to our safety and our livelihood, and it jeopardizes our ability to live peacefully in our home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just want to add one more thing. We did have a private meeting with Daniel Cardenas, like a year ago, I believe, and we have a recording of it. He did state that by me putting in a shop, it would require me to put in the curb and gutter in the front 900 South, and the half of the, my, the road on our, to the east of our home as well.
Yeah, that's just for an accessory building, not for a subdivision.
And now he's telling you something different.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open our public hearing, inviting anybody to come forward and address the counsel. Would you please state your name, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Joe Felon. I brought some prepared statements, but I just want to say something before I read them. This whole thing could be solved if you just let them have, if you, if you would let the Kelsons have a flag lot. There's already four or five on our road. I don't see what the, that would just solve everything. But with that said, I will read my statement. Good evening, my name is Joe Felon. My daughter is Abigail Bonilla, and my son-in-law, Ricardo Bonilla, live at 1040 East 900 South, the very home where I was raised. The memories I have of growing up in Pleasant Grove are of city officials and city employees who liked working with Pleasant Grove residents, and genuinely listened to their concerns. Unfortunately, I believe my family's recent experience working with Daniel Cardenas and Jacob, Jacob Hawkins suggests that today's Pleasant Grove no longer reflects those values. I'd like to share a few examples. My son-in-law Ricardo told me that he attempted to pay an application fee, and Jacob Hawkins refused to take his payment. Only after persistent effort did Mr. Hawkins reluctantly consult with Mr. Cardenas. During an extended wait, Ricardo overheard them laughing at his expense, something they likely didn't realize. Jacob eventually returned and said that if Ricardo insisted on paying that today, he would delay the process by four weeks. Ricardo paid the application fee anyway. During a meeting, the hearing appeals officer asked us if we had been provided with a staff report in advance, as required. We told him no. After that, Jacob Hawkins walked over and dropped a copy of a staff report on our table, walked back to his seat without saying a word. The meeting was canceled. The meeting was at 2:00 in the afternoon. Many of us had to get off work, it was a waste of time. When I asked Mr. Hawkins after the meeting why we hadn't received the staff report in advance, he said that Daniel Cardenas is responsible for that, and he was out of town. I'd be glad to share more, I would, I would be glad to share with you more experiences that suggest a troubling pattern, a lack of professionalism, and what I can only describe as an attitude of disdain from Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Hawkins towards my family and Pleasant Grove residents. If a customer voiced concerns about one of my employees, I would listen. If multiple customers raised concerns about the same employee, I would take action. I don't know whether this behavior is isolated, or these two, with these two individuals, or whether it's a reflection of deep, a deeper cultural issue among city staff. I know this is an election year. Voters deserve to know who is, who is representing them, and what behaviors are being tolerated or endorsed. That's why I'm launching a website where Pleasant Grove residents can share experiences they have had with city employees and elected officials. Think of it as a, my, rate my professor, or a Google review for people running the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I am Jonathan Garlic. I live on 900 and Locust, just right on the corner by the area. A lot of things that I've been worried about with this is, when you look at the roads, I'm one, thinking of how kids will go, I mean, teenagers will drive up and down that. I can see teenagers deciding to see how fast they can make turns, do like a serpentine run, things like that, which of course, would be bad for safety, for any houses around that area. My next question is also, how, after these roads are done, it's now up to the city to maintain them. So how much money would we get from those residents, those houses that could be built there, to cover that maintenance of those roads? And so I'm, I hope that that is being considered, because to me, I do not see a purpose of those roads. We do say, you know, there's the joining utilities and stuff. I do not see why those could not just be going down 1,000, once that's built. I do not see why we would need those joining from 900 to 1,000. I have no idea of whether or not there is an overload of the systems across those, but I just do, going up and down that road constantly, I do not see a reason for us to have in, any of those connection roads. There's already gonna be one made once 1,000's all the way down, and it's not that long of a distance, so I just do, do not see a justification for us to spend the money to maintaining these roads, where you, we would get maybe one or two residents on those roads, where when 1,000 was built, if 1,000's built, that would be the other extra resident. So I see, in justification for accounting purposes, things like that, I do not see those roads being a benefit to the city. I do not see how they can be even worse a safety hazard for the residents around the area. And so I would hope that you guys would consider that when you think about it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Daniel.
My name's Stephen Felon. On all these vicinity maps, I find it interesting that none of them showed those cul-de-sacs coming from 10 South. As you know and I know, everything runs downhill. And if those original cul-de-sacs had come from 10 South, they'd been less likely to affect the homes on the 900 South Road, and the sewer and the water and the storm drain would all be going the right way, and we wouldn't be talking about this today. It's interesting that it never was thought of doing it that way. The vicinity map was going against the grain, and made it really hard, so I find that really hard. The bottom line of it is, is the Kelsons need to move forward. Don't understand, they're, they're gonna be pumping their, their lower lot, because the sewer doesn't make it. We should have been going the other way. If they can still build this thing, the bottom line is, is there is absolutely nothing that benefits the Bonilla family. They can't get three lots. We bought, with that property, it was bought 54 years ago in the family. We always knew that we would be able to break off a lot in the back, and it would face 10 South, and there would only be that frontage over there. If the city wants to go forward, compensate them for the other half of the road that you want, and put it in, because there's absolutely nothing for this family to gain, only to lose. They can't get a third lot on there, because the house sits back too far. And for you to put a hundred thousand dollar burden on them to go ahead and finish, when they build a bigger lot, or a bigger addition on this home, is not right. I, we don't want to hold up the Kelsons. If you want to agree that that lot, that road, stay the way it is, and be basically a flag lot road, fine, but there, this, this road has absolutely nothing for the Bonillas to gain. Thank you.
Anyone else? I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our open hearing, and bring it back up here to the counsel for further discussion, or a motion, counsel?
Well, there, there was some issues brought up. I mean, I was just curious if someone could answer it from staff. Setbacks, 12 feet, how, what is the distance from Bonilla's house to, to the two-thirds road that's gonna be finished? Who, who can answer that? Daniel?
So right now, from where the road is, is, ends, from the Kelsons, is about between 26 and 28 feet.
Okay.
And then Daniel, can you, Daniel, can you speak to the requirement that would, that would require the Bonillas to, to, to do curb and gutter?
Yes.
I can help with that one. I'm, I don't know what was represented to the Bonillas during the conversation that was referenced, but in our conversations, he brought it to the legal department, and I informed him that I thought that would be an unfair burden to place on them for the addition of just the accessory building. The state, the municipal code does require, they will have to put the improvements in on 900 South, but we would not be requiring them to finish the other half of the road, or to put the road improvements on the west side of that connecting road, just for building the accessory building.
And I know we don't, we, I know we really try not to have flag lots, that's from, for a lot of different reasons that, that we've talked about in the past. Can you give me just a little bit of history on, was that, was that an application that was denied? Or was it not ever, did it never, it never came to counsel? Tell us a little bit more about that.
Yes, but just-
Because if, because if I understand that right, and is, if, if this was a flag lot, this would not impact the Bonillas at all?
Yes, so we had an application from, we had conversations with the Kelsons regarding how to develop that, that land. It was important for us, because this road right here has always been in, it's always been on our master plan to eventually be developed. So in the way to do flag lots, we will never be able to, 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 to develop that land. The Kelsons used to own not just this portion, but they owned land like right here. So it was part of it, like, hey, we eventually need to have those lots fronting this road right here, by doing a flag lot, then everything can be developed flag lot, and that road will never be accomplished right there. We, on, on the other, like, parallel to that, we were working on flag lots as well, and reducing the number of lots to, from, to one, maximum one flag lot. In this case, it will be difficult for them to obtain three lots, because that's what they're trying to do, they're trying to, well, no, that's what it was approved. It was one lot right here, a lot in the middle, and a third lot right here. So eventually, we needed to, this road to be connected, and we were- and we worked with the Kelsons to be able to purchase that portion of the land to assure, if I can say it like that, that eventually we can connect one thousand, one thousand road right there. So that's the history why we decided not to go with a flag lot and how to, it was important for us to get this east to west connectivity.
So are the Kelsons in favor of a flag lot?
Pardon?
Are the Kelsons?
Originally, they wanted to develop under the flag lot ordinance, but in the meantime of the opening discussions, until our ordinance was amended, they did not submit an application. So they are not vested under the old flag lot ordinance. They would be subject to the new flag lot ordinance, which would allow them to only have two lots, not the three that they want.
So the maximum they could have is two lots with the new flag lot ordinance?
Daniel, what is the, we're dealing with slope, I know here, pretty significant. Do you know what the grade percentage is from, from, was it nine, nine hundred, nine, nine, nine hundred to a thousand? What was, what is the, what is the slope variance on that?
I'm gonna refer to Neil because he's more, he knows more than me about that.
I'm gonna say ten to twelve feet from nine hundred south to one thousand south. That's the question you're asking?
Yeah, so pretty, pretty significant there.
Yeah, it goes down pretty well, and downward sloping flag lots or cul-de-sacs are a bad idea.
Right.
We've had experience-
That's, that's the reason for the question.
Very recently with challenges associated with that. So, you know, property owners are required to take care of the water on their own site. So this opportunity here provides a storm drain outlet for the road-
To, to, onto, onto a one thousand, right.
That we will then complete a storm drain project down to that connection with the existing road.
Can I ask you a question while you're up here, Neil?
Sure, yeah.
And so, we heard some information that this half road is gonna have to be elevated quite a bit over the adjacent lot, which would be the Bonilla's lot. Is that, what is your take on that? Is that a safe roadway? I just want to get your take on that.
So the plans created by Roger Dudley have the road about three feet higher than existing grade.
Is that required, or?
Not required, but often common, just due to the fact that you have to build the road itself. And in order for them to build the site the way they would, that's how they designed it, so. In terms of, I would consider this area hillside development, hillside lots. Having some grade difference, differences between lots is not uncommon. I, I live on what some would say a very flat lot, and I have five feet of difference from the front of my house to the back.
Now I kinda want to get to the heart of what we're considering here today, which is a vicinity plan proposed amendment. It eliminates that road. And so, you're our public works guy, so you're an expert, I'm not, so I'm gonna ask you, which, in your opinion, and I know, hate to put you on the spot, but I think you've evaluated this quite a bit. In your opinion, which vicinity plan is, is better and why? The current vicinity plan, or is it better to be amended?
The current vicinity plan as is is better. It provides a road network for vehicles. It provides pedestrian access for pedestrians, and it provides utility corridors that serve a city. So anytime, you're talking about just eliminating this road and essentially not having the availability of a road, the road is gonna go in with the Kelson development if they proceed. The road that is impacting the Bonillas will not go in if they do not develop their property. So it's all contained on the Kelson property.
But there are other connections along that roadway, correct?
Two others.
There are none right now that exist.
In the plan, in the plan, there's, there's two.
In the plan.
There are possible connections in the plan, yes.
But there's planned connections in addition to that.
And those were strategically placed along boundaries should those properties decide to develop.
Okay.
Then I just had a follow-up, and this is for legal. My understanding is, we've been talking, throwing around some words like vested interest. My understanding would be that even if we were to amend the vicinity plan, as we're being asked to do, that if the Kelsons chose to proceed, they could because their plat has already been recorded as of the date. And that the vicinity plan as stands is not the subject of any legal proceeding or appeal, and it is set and legally in place right now. I just want, is that correct? Is my understanding correct on that?
The, the way, so there's no appeal for the adoption of the existing vicinity plan. Anybody is way past their appeal time to appeal the original decision. And the Kelsons, should they choose to proceed, are vested in the ordinances and the subdivision plat that was approved. So they could go forward with their current plan and build the two-thirds road.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what is even, we're being, it, I guess we're being asked to do something that is a legal impossibility at this point. Because there's a vested right to build this road, I just want to make sure legal, legally, we don't have the power to now change that plat that has been duly recorded, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't know if that plat has been recorded. I know it has been approved.
Okay. And approval's enough to vest that property, right? So we can't change the approval of that road.
Right. The city, the city has already approved the subdivision and the road.
And I mean, I hate to do this, but I think it's just educational a little bit. And that is that, once a vicinity plan is passed, and then if there is a plat that conforms with that vicinity plan, then that's the end, that's the end of it, correct? We, it's not an approval by us, but it's, as long as it conforms with the vicinity plan, then it, it goes through the process, then it's, that's, then it's allowed.
Conformance with the vicinity plan is one element of what is reviewed when a subdivision plat is submitted.
And all of the other elements were also met, I'm assuming, with this subdivision plat?
Correct, it would have been approved.
Could the Kelsons literally fit, if we go back to the previous ordinance for the flag lot, could they fit the three lots on, under the, under the previous ordinance?
No. So the vicinity plan is the only thing in front of you right now. We amended the flag lot ordinance. They cannot use the old flag lot ordinance that would allow them to have three lots on a flag. We amended it. They would be subject to the amended flag lot ordinance, which only allows them the two lots, not the three.
But could they literally fit three at this point?
With the road? I don't understand the question.
If we were, but now can they go back to the previous flag lot, okay, not saying go back, but theoretically, with the previous flag lot ordinance, could they fit three before it was amended?
Before the flag lot was amended?
Correct.
I don't know. That would be a Daniel question.
Square, square footage, they may have enough, but going, again, going with a, doing a uphill will be the complication of it. So to be able to get all the utilities and stuff like that, going to, to, going to the, to nine hundred north would be complicated. So if the new flag lot ordinance didn't exist, would they have enough acreage to build three lots? Probably, yeah. Probably, yeah. But in that, we have to go like to pretty much remove that flag lot ordinance that we have adopted so far.
Well, I think you mentioned this, I think actually Mr. Felon mentioned this as well, and I think we all know this, it crap runs downhill. And so it would be very, in your opinion, and maybe Neil, you can talk to this as well, with, with the flag lot, which is not really a possibility or what's being considered today. But with that flag lot, is it realistic to, what, I guess, what's a better way to develop the three lots? When considering the utilities, the flag lots or the through street?
No, the through street by far, from the land use perspective.
Yeah, the through street provides all the benefits associated with vehicular connectivity, pedestrian connectivity, and utility corridors for not only this street, but for the community as a whole to navigate our streets.
So let me, let me kinda try to sum this up from a, from my, my perspective. We, we're on a, we have a parcel that, that a landowner is trying to develop. It's on a slope that is sloping down from north to south. We're not, we're not considering a road on a thousand south. And, and so that's, that's difficult. We're kind of being asked to try to figure out how we split this up so that it, it does not negatively affect the Bonitas, which none of us, I'm confident, want. Nor does, nor, nor do we want it to negatively impact the, 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 the Kelsons. This is a, this is a difficult one. Is there any way, Daniel or Neil, that this can be resolved without impacting the Bonitas or the Kelsons in any way? By still, by still putting a road in it, because I think that's, I think that has to be done. I, I-
Well, the Bonitas aren't being asked to do anything today.
Okay, just, just go through that a little bit, just for the education of all involved.
The Kelsons are developing, so they are, the burden of development falls on the developer. And I think that's where the quote that I was quoted from earlier in planning commission is, "We're not gonna pay for the rest of the road to be built." When land is developed, the developer pays for that, turns that over to the city. That's how nearly all the roads in Pleasant Grove have been developed. And so the, the Kelsons are building what is their proportionate shares. They might argue is a little, little more even, because they're building two-thirds. And we are planning, as is our duty, for the future. One thousand south, you said we're not contemplating that? We are in the planning stage.
Sure.
We are not budgeting for that. We are not planning to build that and spend roadway dollars today. But someday, I believe, it will be built. And we're also planning for the future, whether the Bonitas decide to develop or not, or whether the Royal West, or whether the Jollies to the east, any of them develop. We are planning for that today with the, the process and things that we have put in place with this one little development. And so, to me, this is the best way to get to the end of the city is what you see here. And that, that's why the vicinity plan has what it has.
Can, I don't, no, 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 Neil, if this is you or who this is, can speak to the safety concerns that Mrs. Bonilla brought up regarding the height of the road, the drop-off, the, all the safety concerns that she, because I am concerned about that.
Yeah, so, so right now, two homes will access off of this two-thirds roads, road. If this was a major thoroughfare, major roadway, an arterial or a collector, we would be concerned about that and maybe install additional barriers. This is gonna be literally a driveway. If this was a, a deep lot, two deep lots, it would develop in the same way, probably even closer to the property line. So it's not gonna be used in its current condition for, for more than those two homes. And so from our perspective, we don't, we don't put in barriers on hillside developments and roads. They're curbs that prevent cars from veering off the road. We put the burden of proper travel on the driver all over our city, no different than right here.
But can you speak to specifically her concerns about the height and a car, just the, it just seemed that there was more concerns that she had than a normal resident would have. And I understand it's not gonna be a major thoroughfare, but all it takes is one car.
Yeah.
And so I understand like it reduces the risk, but there's still a risk there.
So there's gonna be twenty-five feet of asphalt, as I recall, on the site. There's gonna be an asphalt berm and a few feet between them and a concrete existing wall along those. And that's what the detail from Roger Dudley showed that I, that I had, that we reviewed. So, so if, if a car decides to veer off a twenty-five foot road and travel into adjacent property, that, that risk exists today all over our city. They can, they can go over curbs, they can go over mounds. There are some roads in our city that don't have any curb and gutter, and it's gravel, and they could veer off and go into a home today. So while it's a concern that we don't want to have happen as far as cars veering off the road, it's not something that, that I would say statistically meets the requirement to have, you know, a guardrail or something along those lines. I mean, we have, we have hillside roads all over that, that pose larger threats than what you would see here.
Thanks, Neil. Anything else, counsel?
Mayor, I did just want to say, I think, I think, I want to echo Todd's sentiments that it, it's a difficult decision because we don't want to impose a burden on the Bonitas. And we don't want them to feel like we have not heard their concerns. It's just such a difficult balance when you have private property rights. And the way that we understand the construction, and we're not even considering a, a map or a, a plan for the, the development. But what we understand is that there's a, there's a property owner that wants to build three lots, and that under the current vicinity plan, which is not subject to any legal appeal or legal process, but is set as our current vicinity plan, it allows for this road to go in. And so it allows for somebody who owns property to submit a plan that conforms with current ordinance and, and law to have three lots there and put in a two-thirds road with a hammerhead. And to, to vote otherwise is just really difficult because then you're asking me to divest somebody of their property right. You're asking me to tell somebody, yeah, you own that property, but guess what? Too bad. Yeah, you comply with the law, but too bad. And that's the difficult part for me when I'm considering this, is that I get that progress can be hard. I get that development always impacts the lots that are around it. And, but when considering the legalities of what exists now and what is being proposed, and then the, the legal effect of the actual amendment, it's a really, it's, it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult issue. But at the end of the day, it's one that seems like it complies with the laws of the city and the county, and so it's a tough one. So I just wanted to mention that. I get that it's hard, and I live on a street where there was, there's a main road that was put in, and now it's super duper busy, and my corner was completely changed, and I'm not stoked about it. But at the same time, as our city develops and these infield developments go in, and people who have private rights in their property want to do certain things with their property, then they're legally entitled to, to proceed and move forward. And I think that, that's where I stand, is it's a, it's a difficult issue, but, but, but ultimately, people have rights in their property. When they choose to develop, that can be hard, and it can hurt their neighbors, but that's what happens. Like, we had one earlier this year where there was some hurt feelings, and then all of a sudden, it was the most beautiful thing. Both sides got together after the meeting, and they talked about it, and, and they understood that they may have differing interests, but they're still humans, and they, they still can be friends and understand each other, and, and maybe disagree as to one thing, but then recognize that they agree as to a hundred other things, and that they can still be friendly and nice. And I hope that's the case with this development as it goes in. But ultimately, you know, if somebody buys a piece of property and they comply with the law, as the legislative body here in Pleasant Grove, I don't, I don't see how we can prevent them from doing that, so it's hard.
I do, I, I, Steve, I think you're spot on. I think those comments were perfect. I think my, my, my thoughts are, I would, the, the pleadings of Abigail and Ricardo on treatment, I think warrants a discussion. And so I, I, I never want that to happen in our city. I never want that to be a, a point of, of conflict. So Mayor, maybe I'll just ask if you, or Scott, or both of you- So Mayor, maybe I'll, I'll just ask if you or, or Scott, or both of you would, would work with them just from an operational, city operational standpoint to make sure we're not, we're not going down a, a path that's, that's wrong or, or inappropriate in any way.
I think you can just review the process.
Just review the process, that's right. Yep, and make sure we're, make sure we're-
We'll do that.
We're good.
Okay. Anything else, counsel? Okay, with that, ask for a motion.
Mayor?
What's that?
Mrs. Bonilla was standing up, I don't know if I want to-
No, I'm sorry, we don't- No, that's, we're, they had their turn, so we're, we're not gonna get into a discussion with the- So anyway, I ask for a motion.
Is, I, I have another question. Is there any way at this point that we can make the flaglot work, even if it is the two lots? I mean, I know, I don't know if the Kelsons are here.
That isn't what's before you right now, and I don't know, that's not a decision that we, an answer that we can give in the spur of the moment at the meeting. Because as Daniel explained, it's not just the fact that they couldn't get three, it's the fact that it's a downward sloping lot, and there would be issues in getting their sewer up to 9th South.
And drainage.
And drainage up to 9th South.
Well, certainly nothing we're doing today mandates anything. Nobody has, no, we're not telling them they have to build this road, or they have to develop. Nothing, we're just not a, if, if the motion passes, we would just be not amending our vicinity plan. We're not considering a plat map, we're not considering a site plan. We're just not amending what currently is in place.
Counsel? We do not have a motion?
Well, at this time, Mayor, I will make a motion that we deny the request for an ordinance 2025-010 for a vicinity plan amendment located within the area delineated by Locust Avenue, 900 South, 1150 East, and 1,000 South in the R19 single-family residential zone. The applicant is requesting, and I don't think I need to read the rest of that, with the specific findings of that the council has adopted, the findings of the Planning Commission and that it finds that the area, due to its unique topographical features, the downward slopes, that the vicinity, the current vicinity plan is the best, is, is a good and developed option for the special considerations of the slopes of the topographical features, that the current vicinity plan provides the best option for coordinating necessary future utility services with Linden City and for future development, that the current vicinity plan provides for improved connectivity with 1,000 South for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. And that, and maybe this is, this is very important, I think, and that the Kelson development, which has been proposed and is already vested, would leave a half-street with a hammerhead turnaround in perpetuity, which is not a preferred planning option. And based on those findings, that's what I base my motion on, your, uh, Mayor.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jensen. And this will be a roll call vote here for this denial. And we will start out with Councilmember Rogers.
Yes, I vote on the motion to deny the ordinance.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries, thank you. Now we've asked for a, a motion for a five-minute recess here for a minute here, so I-
I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion so we can fill in. You can leave.
We have a motion, five-minute recess for Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be adjourned for five minutes here, thank you.